So, after you hear all of the amazing things that non-traditional schools do for our students, you will go from looking like Ms. Smith's rose to Ms. McLaughlin's rose.[12.88][12.88][laughter] In just a matter of minutes, you'll be all perked up and excited because of the amazing work that is going on in our non-traditional schools. This sheet is your high level. The purpose of this is really so that when you're looking at what the options for students are, that you understand those options. You will be pleased to know that we have hidden 19 slides, so that we're going to keep us at a very high level. But you can go back into the PowerPoint. All of the slides are posted on the PowerPoint. But we're going to keep, I have to tell you, the ones we hid are the ones that these programs are most proud of, because we have statistics on the data out of those programs. But you can look at that later, because this is just informational, so that you know that. So we'll have a quick overview, an opportunity for questions, and then that will be it. I cannot start without doing one very important thing. You know, in the last few weeks, we've had some very difficult times. And I have to recognize Mary Ann Panarelli. She is quite a remarkable colleague and friend.[90.29][90.29][applause] The only real problem is that we exasperate each other's tendency to stay up late at night and work, and finally at 11:30, we'll just say, "Pick up the phone." Because we've had some times where we're working well into the night trying to figure out things, and we are not good for each other in that way. However, the thing is, sometimes things need to get done, and there's nobody that I can count on more than Mary Ann, and so I'm most appreciative. The other magic makers in the back room are Kurt Mills, our out-of-school support. So he's looking at all the things around students on homebound, home-based, and in the discipline process. He is very much of a magician, trying to find whatever works. And Shannon Matheny, she only has 32 inter-agency sites that she's over, although the number changes daily. Did I get it right? So they're here as well. So, non-traditional school programs, if you would go forward, what we're going to try to do is walk you through from your highest level of understanding, things that you're very familiar with, down to things you might be less familiar with. So we do have a wide range of options, and we're going to talk about these options, because not only are they open to the hearings office, but they're also open to other students who are experiencing behavioral or academic difficulties. A counselor, a school team, an administrator, a parent, or a student can refer into our programs. So if you look at this slide, these are all the placement options, and you'll see the top two are the ones you're most familiar with. Bryant Alternative High School and Mountain View Alternative High School. But what you may not, some of you have gone on the trips, and you know that Mountain View will go out in the quad. That is now Mountain View High School, Alternative High School. That has an ALC and an AIM program. And the reason we can have them there is it's not a regular school site, and so we can place other kids that can't be on traditional high school sites there. So those programs that might be on Bryant or Mountain View sites include AIM, the ALC. The inter-agency programs we'll talk about a little later, those are Shannon's programs all over the county. And then also, we have out-of-school support, which Kurt supervises, and our three special education centers, Burke, Cedar Lane, and Quander. And many times, you know, we have a procedure support liaison in the hearings office, and they work with the IEP team to look at some of our sites when we have a student that has an IEP and some serious discipline issues. So Mary Ann, tell us what happens at the alternative high schools. This is also going to go back and forth, so you won't get bored with my voice, and we're going to get through this quickly.
And I do want to, just as a format for helping you understand how this is organized, the first programs that we're going to talk about are the programs that students are most likely to go to if they're not allowed to go back to their base school, but it is something, they've done one thing, or maybe this is a second thing that they've done. As we go through the programs, they're sort of for more serious offenses, or kids that have multiple offenses.
Right. We are not talking about kids going back to their base or another regular school.
Right.
We're talking about the other options, okay?
So the alternative high school is about 80% to 85% voluntary place. That means kids go there, because there's a program for both boys and girls who are pregnant or parenting. And there is also a large number of students who go there just because they don't fit in well in a general education high school. It is primarily, it's for older students, so most of them are in 11th or 12th grade, but they do offer a full range of courses, because some of the students may not have had or passed their earlier 9th and 10th grade courses.
So to clarify that, they are 17 years and up. They may be taking 9th grade courses, but at Bryant and Mountain View Alternative, they are the older students. So if you have a 15-year-old student, they do not, cannot be placed in the Mountain View or Bryant Alternative High School, because they've found that that group of kids does not mix well together, to put a 14- and 15-year-old with some of the 18- and 19-year-olds that are more mature. So it's 17 and up, but we offer 9th grade through 12th grade curriculum.
And then the alternative, that's yours.
Okay. We'll go to the next slide, and the alternative learning centers. Lots of hidden slides that give you data, but those sites are Cameron and Burke for elementary. And then at the secondary, the ALCs are at Bryant, Montrose, and Mountain View.
So the alternative learning centers, if you think about the alternative high schools, are for the kids who are 17 and older. The alternative learning centers are again, sort of, the first step in alternative schools, and they are for the younger children.
K through 10.
K through 10. So on the grounds of Bryant and Mountain View High School, as Kim said, there's a separate section that is for the kids who are in 9th and 10th grade. On Montrose, it's middle school age. And then over at Cameron and at Burke, we have elementary all the way from kindergarten up.
And some of you may remember that Tara Center had that elementary ALC, but Leslie Butts worked to move that to Burke, so that it had a more consistent supervision, so that, if you remember, when it was there.
And the main thing with the alternative high schools and the alternative learning centers is that the classes are smaller, and there's a very high focus on relationship building. And for the children who are at the alternative learning centers, they tend to stay about a semester, and then they return to their base school. Depending on exactly when they come in, they might stay two semesters, but typically, they stay about a semester. At the alternative high schools, typically, the hearings office has released their prohibition against them going back to a base school. But most kids, because they don't come in until they're juniors or seniors, once they get there, they find that they would rather stay and finish. So with the rare exception of a kid who's very involved in sports or something, most kids will get there, and they will stay and graduate from the high school. But from the younger programs, those kids tend to go back.
So they're automatically, at the semester, it automatically triggers reviewing them going back to the base school. The other thing that we find is, just like at the high school, there are some students who find that that setting supports them getting things finished, and they do stay, but that's not as typical as it is with the older kids. So the next thing that we have, our next slide, are the inter-agency alternative schools.
Another slide.
One more slide.
There we go.
So we have three of these type of schools. The first one is TSRC. In the past, and you know, Mr. Stork and Mrs. Strauss, people who've been on, and Ms. Smith, you remember, we had Summit, we had this. We always have waves when we have more money, and then we cut them, but we always have to bring them back, because we always have a need for students to have something different. So the TSRC, at one time, was only for students transitioning from prison or detention center, and they needed an in-between step. As it evolved, and we reduced our number of students at the JDC and other sites, that's, we've kept some of those resources, because they are state-funded as well. We do have some resources from the state, but they're much more flexible, and we're using for kids who need them. And some of them are from those more restrictive settings, and some are from kids that are just really struggling at some of our other sites. One of the sites, and you'll see where they are, if you go to the, well, we'll stay here for just a second. One of those sites, we actually share, and Alexandria pays us, because they need spaces at that site, and that's at Bryant. The second program is our grants program, which is the GED and the new technology skill. If you were at the graduation at adult high school, you know that that's the, when they exhibit by other means their external diploma capacity. So, and the GED is also something that's really going to change, because it's going online and is much harder, but we are working around that. And the last are the agency-sponsored program. Those are all on the CSB side, the Community Services Board. That would be alcohol, mental health, drug awareness, and in order for the students not to have to leave their treatment program, we have teachers that we flexibly use in those sites, and we'll show you those sites on the next slide. So first, this TSRC, and we have those kind of learning opportunities at all of these sites. Some of them, you will see, are on school grounds, and this gives the hearings office the ability to place some kids in some settings. Others are there, for instance, Robinson and Westfield, is Westfield on there?
Yes, in South County.
They have developed programs on their own campus, because some kids need a break from the school day, and they come out and they do one class out there. And so they've evolved into kind of flexible settings. And Mary Ann can tell you just a little bit more of those.
So basically, with the TSRC, and some of you may also recall, at one point, we had something called CEI, or Computer Enhanced Instruction. And what we found over time was that kids really, the kinds of children who were coming to these programs had a really hard time functioning purely with a computer-type response. These are not kids who would easily just do an online course. So we found we were blending computer instruction with a teacher instruction. So this year, we just decided to call them all Transition Resource Centers. So it is a blended instructional model. We do have two options. If the student is placed by the hearings office, it is a five-hour program. We decided to do that, because we were removing a kid from a full-day program, and not voluntarily putting him into a program. So to just put him in for two and a half hours for kids at this level didn't make too much sense, and we had the resources that we could make it a five-hour program for them. Most of those programs are off school grounds. They are in places like the South County Government Center and the courthouse, because these are students that the hearings office has said, "The student may not be on school grounds." And so, again, this is a higher level of disciplinary infraction typically. We do continue to offer the two-and-a-half-hour option for students who are voluntarily placed. As Kim said, some kids will come from their base school for a couple hours of work to work on one course or two course. Some kids need the flexible schedule, either because of work schedules or other family commitments, so they can work half a day at school and work half of the day at home using the computer. Other kids have illnesses such that, you know, getting to school in the morning is a hard time, but they can get there by noon, and so again, and then they may be up later, and that's when they want to work on the computer. So we offer that range.
I think the important thing with the Apex is to understand, we really found, with the non-traditional learner, that you have to have the combination of teacher in relationship with the online, and that online campus was not an option. We were not having good results with students doing online campus.
You know, back to the grants program for a moment. This is a specific program for 16- to 18-year-olds who are interested in getting a GED, unlike the one at the high school, at the adult high school. This is for students who would otherwise want to drop out. You can't drop out of school before you're 18. There's compulsory education in Virginia. So this is for kids who are 16 to 18, but want to get the GED for a whole variety of reasons. Again, sometimes it's medical conditions, sometimes it's just that they are sort of missing a lot of school, but they are very smart kids, and we could go ahead with this. The grants program does also have a vocational element to it that is required by the state.
And the grants program is, again, a part of a state initiative, and any of the students that are applying for this, if they're underage, so we do know we have a lot of GED at the adult high school, but for the younger, we approve those individually, and the intake person works with them closely to make sure that we're offering them all of the options that might be available to them. So the next thing are our agency-sponsored programs on the next slide. And if you look at the top, under Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court, all of those sites are sites that only a judge or court can place kids into. So those, we don't have any control over who goes into them, and they go in by the judge, but we staff teachers there for these programs. The ones on the bottom, at the, for the mental health, Centerville, Leland House, Fairvex, Sojourn House, Reston, and Substance Abuse Falls Church, City, Horizons, Franconian Crossroads Residential, those would be placements through the CSB process and would come through those offices.
So the students in those programs, they're small programs, and they're students who have, you know, pretty significant either emotional or legal criminal-type behavior that they've engaged in. We do want to note, because this gets confusing sometimes, about 29%, 30% of the kids who are in those programs have been involved with the hearings office, but the hearings office cannot place them there. So what happens is that a student, for example, might have been involved with the hearings office and also involved with the court. So the court takes precedence in that case and says, "You're going to go to this school." And the involvement with the hearings office simply says, "Before you go back to another school, after attending this school, you have to come back through the hearings office again to let us look at the whole case, to see where you are." And sometimes we'll step them down to one of the other non-traditional programs before having them go back to a base school, but sometimes that gets a little confusing.
So the next slide is our AIM, which are the Achievement Integrity and Maturity. And I just love this acronym. I'm always trying to remember, what does this stand for? Because it stands for our most difficult cases.
And this is what we want them to have, when they leave.
Yes, we would like them to have. And we do, that's right. It is a hopeful acronym, but if you go to any of those graduations, which we just had two, at both the AIMS, we had some rather remarkable kids finally getting their diplomas, their high school diploma. One of them is actually a father who changed after his prison involvement and wanted his son to have a different life. He's one of our dreamcatchers at George Mason, and he's in the pathway to Novartis for GMU. And it's like one kid at a time. Those graduations are usually four or five kids, and again, one starfish at a time there.
And this particular program, we do keep typically at a two-and-a-half hour, and part of that is, we have two programs. That gives us four sections, if you will, to separate kids who might have been in rival gangs, to separate the girls from the boys. Or we typically put girls and younger boys together in one class, and older boys together in the other. And so, on a case-by-case basis, we may have a kid stay the whole five hours, but we have kept the sections that way, so that we have the flexibility to separate them without trying to start extra programs.
We do separate the parents of the two children, the 14-year-old and the 18-year-old. They don't go to school at the same time during that program. So the next slide is, Mr. Stork will be particularly interested in this one, because one of the things that occurred in the past is, we looked at what were the needs of certain students that couldn't be met in some of our other programs. And we did find a student that needed to be working, and they had internships, and they were really clearly headed to a pathway that we could relate to, a vocational pathway. And so Landmark Academy was created many years ago. Over the years, Landmark, number one, reduced in the number of stores in the mall that were offering internships. So most recently, in the past three years, we've had less opportunity to have that kind of program where they had true internships. And the number of students in that has been about 14, although you'll see on the list, the chart, that it can vary, because we take kids at the mid-year. Rather than drop out, why don't you try this program? Landmark Mall is closing for renovation. And so when they close for renovation, at first, we thought that this March, we were going to have to exit, but we just got the email, we're not going to have to get out of there until June 30th, so they will be able to finish the year. But when we also looked at this program with 14 kids and not meeting any of the purposes that it was established for, and we looked at the square footage that it would cost to do this in any other place, when Landmark reopens, we could not afford the square footage. We looked at lots of places, but then we weren't even able to offer all of the things that it was established for. So instead, it allowed us to open up more opportunities for all of our students in our non-traditional programs, because we have pulled into Landmark and the kinds of offerings, and we're now going to be able to add, as you see up on the board, career options for all of the students in our non-traditional program. You know where we have, we're building a house, and we have had fewer kids enroll there because of the new economics, the new, we've had kids being bumped out of electives, but we now have a TSRC trailer, where the kids come in and they do their academics, and then they go over to the work site, and they are, everybody's ecstatic. So the project base, that has worked very well, and so that allowed Kate Salerno, the creative person that she is, to say, "What other options can we offer in our non-traditional schools?" So we will be having more academy options for those students that are in our non-traditional programs, and they need lots more vocational, and so we're very excited about this. So will the Landmark-type student still be able to have that? Yes. Will it be at Landmark Academy? No. But they will still be pulled into the kind of career path that they needed. So that is, that has been going this year. The last slide that I'm just going to quickly go over is the out-of-school support. We've talked to you about that in the past. These are the options that, the minute that the 10th day happens, we have made phone calls, we're supporting kids with a case manager, and a lot of times, face-to-face, based on the hearings office. We have hundreds of kids that, 502 kids that we've served in that, 345 high school, 118 middle, and 39 elementary. And then the last slide is the options for students with disabilities, because those are quite different. We have been doing a predominant amount of that through home base, because once the MDR is done, many times, they're returning to another site. But we want to encourage them more to go to one of our sites that we've established at Bryant and, no, at Cedar Lane and Quander, because we want to have more students in a regular setting rather than at home, because they are more likely to transition to a full-day program than just a home base. It's more supervision. We're finding that not all parents want their kids to come off home base. It's easy to have the services delivered at home, and they also are worried about the number of transitions, but it's something that we're working on for the future. And, Mrs. Reed, questions?
Twenty minutes.
How about that?
That's impressive. Thank you, ladies, very much. Any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Mrs. Strauss, Mr. Stork.
I don't see page on here, so I apologize that I can't really reference it, but there's...
Tell us what's on it now.
Oh, it's the out-of-school support, the OSS 2012-13 data.
Yes.
Where it says 502 total number of students served.
Yes.
I guess they're looking to pull it up.
Actually, it's, I have the data.
Okay.
And the out-of-school slide is...
One of the ones that's hidden.
One that's hidden, but it's on your slide.
Okay.
And so what we have is that we've served 502 students. On average, the students received out-of-school support for less than 30 days, and I asked Mary Ann for the range, and Kurt, and he said it's between 14 and 23 days. And to date, this year, most students have returned to a school program within 11 to 16 days. We also do a satisfaction survey, and 86% of the students and parents on that were satisfied. And the last is, we look at, do they stay on track for promotion and graduation, and that rate is at 79%.
Thank you. The reason I brought up that slide is, one of the things that I've shared with Dr. Garza, and I think school systems around the United States are looking at, is how do we reduce the amount of time that students are out of school? It's just, I mean, the graduation promotion rate is 79%. That's great, but we know county-wide, that is certainly lower than is typical, and so...
To that point, if I could, is that Dr. Garza has convened a group. We'll be meeting in the next two weeks, and it's to look at the number of days. It's a group of principals. We are going to bring the current data. We're going to look at the infractions and what the results of those are. We're going to look at consistency across the district, and our intent is to examine the question that you've asked.
Thank you. I really do appreciate that, and it's one of the things that is making me very hopeful as we move forward, because I, in listening to my colleagues and having this dialogue, I know we appreciate all these programs that you've described that provide supports to students. I think the desire still as a system is that this is sort of the last thing we want to be having to do. When at all possible, as a system, we can continue to shrink the number of students that are getting this kind of out-of-school support, because we've actually kept them in school unless we really did need to remove them, is when I think we're going to continue to move.
Well, I think that you have a good, both Dr. Garza and Mary Ann, we do a lot of negotiating now, and we say, "They're going to end up here, let's get them there now." So I expect that's one of the reasons this number has gone down already, and it will continue to go down.
Well, I'm not sure when you said that this number's going down, because we're going to get them somewhere else? Is that what you're saying? Or is it that we're returning them back to their own schools?
Well, it depends on the infraction.
Right. The message I'm trying to say is, of the 500 students that were served, I guess that was within a given year, that 2012 data.
Right. That's everyone who was brought up for expulsion. So that's not the number who then went on to alternative schools. So that's everybody who was brought up.
No, I understand. And in fact, before I joined the board, that number magically remains, burned in my memory bank. It was 636 were brought up to the hearings office for expulsion in that given year.
One of the things that we also find is, it is, we want programs for everyone, but not everyone does want to go back to their regular school, and some parents are even asking us for, "What are the other options?" So I think we have to have all options on the table, and Dr. Garza, you might want to speak.
Yes. We've been spending a lot of time on these issues, so Kim knows exactly what I'm going to say. I think on this issue, with regard to any time a student's going to be out of school, if it's within our control, whether they're maybe going to go to another school or to another center within our system, it shouldn't require this many days to get them there. But I think we've also talked about down the road, we need more alternative options to students, for students. We have, I'm not talking about disciplinary for now, I'm just talking about students who may end up in the disciplinary process, just because, you know, they struggle to fit into a comprehensive high school. Plus, I think we have many at-risk students who could thrive in a smaller setting that doesn't offer band, you know, doesn't offer all the other comprehensive high school options. But we have limited schools and options available to students. So I think down the road, this is something we're definitely going to have to figure out, is how can we have some, you know, how can we take Mountain View and replicate that throughout the county, so it's accessible and available to students that we might be missing in our comprehensive high schools.
And so, you know, Dr. Docery, the reason I wanted that slide up there is because I did want to emphasize, it's great news, in my mind, that, you know, the number of students being referred for expulsion went from 636, we're now looking at 502. I mean, that's a dramatic drop, and I want my colleagues to appreciate, that's almost 135 students now who did not have, you know, their lives disrupted by going through the hearings process. They were able to, you know, whatever was going on, they're not, they're not being referred that path. Mr. Stork's going to start debating with me. The point of it is, if you ask anyone, if you go through a hearings office and you're recommended for expulsion, that's an extremely difficult thing for families to go to. I don't care how it gets sugar-coated. What it tells me is, fewer of our students are being recommended for expulsion. That's good news.
Right. And this is the 1213 number, so we need... So we need the 13-14 number because our SRNR changed drastically. So I'm hoping that number will go down as well.
Are you about finished, Ms. McLaughlin?
Well, I, I think the one thing I wanted to point out about the slide that, I realize it was a lot of information to pull together, but the, the data had said most students, most students, and it, it just would have actually been more reassuring to me to know what, was it 50%? Was it, you know, 60%? I mean, most, kind of, it was difficult to know where, where they fell in those numbers of returning back to a school program within those days. That's all.
And I thought I was killing you with data already, but, okay.
We can find out.
Thank you. Is that something that you can provide easily to us? Okay, very good. Thank you. I'm going to ask Ms. Schultz to speak a little bit out of turn here, because she does have to go to a budget meeting here, so, followed by Ms. Strauss.
I'm breaking the prime directive, and I'm jumping the queue. But I do have a 7 o'clock budget meeting in Springfield, so I've got to go. A couple of things, just real quick, and I know I was out of the room for a little bit, but I do, I have a question about the concept of the replicating, because that's, that's really the key, as if we have a best practice someplace, is replicating, and why it always has to be at an alternative site. And is that because you're trying to remove access from some of the students to other students? And the reason I say this is because it, for some of the programs or some of the alternatives, a school within a school, you know, may be the way to go. It saves us money because you're able to capitalize on, you know, the existing infrastructure of the school and the staff and the, and the whatever. And I, I highlight, you know, fortunately, my own school, because Danny Meyer was, you know, rather exceptional in terms of our principles in keeping kids out of the pipeline of the hearings office, and finding alternatives, and alternative ways to handle it within the school as opposed to the transfers. Because the, you know, on the cost per pupil, you know, in all honesty, Dr. Garza, part of the reason our cost per pupil is so high is if we send, you know, four or five teachers a week to a kid's house to teach them, or we send them to alternative centers where our costs are higher, that drives up our overall cost per pupil. And this is, you know, not that I want to be efficient on the backs of, you know, at-risk kids, but where we can acquire and utilize the services that are already in existence for the low-risk students who don't maybe need an actual, to be physically separated for, for risk purposes from the other kids, I'm wondering...
Well, I think that's the purpose of the TSRC. So we're utilizing on school campus more flexible resources. And I think for, the one thing to remember is, most of the at-risk don't thrive in classes of 35. And so even though...
When I mean, when I mean a school within a school, I mean, you know, you know, one or two classrooms or whatever that provide that alternate setting, you know, in-school suspension, but not, it doesn't have to necessarily be suspension.
Yeah, I think we have, we also have some schools doing lots more with keeping kids and bringing them out. I think when we, Dr. Garza's group, that we, has a lot going on that we'll be able to build off, so.
And then for the kids who are in that, was, did you say 85% are voluntary at the alternative?
In the alternative high school.
In the alternative high schools, 85% are voluntary. Is that transportation invited or not?
Transportation is provided to everything except not the inter-agency program, so not TSRC and not the...
So, okay, all right, so the disconnect for me is, 85% are pupil self-placed, or whatever we call that, but it's also 17-plus, but we provide transportation.
The reason we went to providing transportation there was because transportation was going anyhow for the ALCs and for the project opportunity kids, and so it wasn't easy transportation to do, to have, just say that you could continue to ride the bus.
Yeah, they go to depot sites, because otherwise we were having attendance and truancy issues. And so they are there, and the routes were already there, and since the routes were already there, transportation...
So it's like consolidated bus stops? Okay, all right, so, all right, so that's, that's the issue. And my only question is, is what does that look like on a cost per pupil if 85% are voluntary? You know, you know, is it relatively comparable? Is it double? Is it, you know, I, I just, I don't have any understanding of what that costs in the alternative sites. And I think that's an important part, and when we talk about our overall cost per pupil, I don't know what our percentage of alternative-site students are to other counties. And the fact that we create these other opportunities, where in other school districts, they may become dropouts, but we may want to have like a pop-out window for all, our alternative sites. You know, like when we talk about class size, except special education, we talk about the overall cost of our education of our students, and then you pop out all the students who are at alternative sites. Now what's our cost? It's even more efficient, but we do have a higher cost for these students, but ultimately, the return to society is better because they don't, you know, they don't become other kinds of problems.
Right. I would say you have to look at that based on what we know about prison pipeline.
Right, but do you see what I'm saying in terms of...
That you avoid it on otherwise, and you also push...
The efficacy of the taxpayer dollar is truly, even though it's more expensive, that becomes a budget slash talking point issue for us to talk about, yes, maybe it contributes to the overall cost, but when you pop it out, the overall cost is down, and look at the good we're doing because we're keeping them out of prison.
Are you suggesting that be an action item?
Yes, I am.
That be provided?
Yes.
Is that something that you all can do easily?
I think it ought to be a regular part of our budget.
It, I'm pretty sure we do cost it, but we'll go back and check, because I know in the inter-agency, I mean, in the non-traditional programs, we have a budget, and it's broken out. So we will work on that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Strauss, followed by Mr. Stork and Ms. Hines.
I just really had, had a very quick question. Burke, Cedar Lane, and Quander, are those the only sites now that have the heavy-duty psychological clinical staff for ED kids?
And Burke.
And Burke, okay. They have, I'm sorry, they, they have more psychological support there because they're ED centers. I mean, we have other places throughout the school system that are co-facilities with...
So an example of that is Madison has a site, and so they, South Lakes has a, we call, we used to call them comprehensive ED sites, but they're serving really across, so we're calling them comprehensive service sites now.
Does Chantilly still have?
Chantilly still has one, South Lakes, Woodson, Madison. And so they do have more clinical and social work staffing, not as much as the public day site.
But if, if a youngster comes through the, the discipline process and has an IEP and is coded ED and it wasn't causal, then the recommendation would be to go to Cedar Lane, Burke, Quander.
Depending on what the IEP team determines.
Right, exactly, but that would be, because I was going to say, I have not, right, in any kind of a hearing capacity. That's the only place that I would see a recommendation.
And we did put those three there, those on the slide, just because that is another hearings office placement, but it goes through the IEP.
Got it. All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Stork.
Ms. Schultz covered one of the points I wanted to cover, which is really the cost effectiveness, the cost of power. I think that is important, and I think the points she made are excellent. So I'm just going to just reiterate that I concur with what you said, and I'd like to see that as well, because I think that's part of what we have to do to be physically responsible, but recognizing that we have to address the needs of each kid, so it's that balance. And looking for ways to do that, I think, do matter, so, even though we're talking about probably less than 1% of the population, so.
And just to remind you, in the 2009 budget, we closed Piment. We repurposed all of that staff to take them, summon more of the other sites, but we have significantly reduced that budget and moved people around. And again, Kurt, Shannon, Mary Ann, and Kate are in the process of doing a reorg of the adult high school, because that's also not as cost-efficient as we'd like to be. And we'll have the results of that in about two months.
And also ties into the contract services that we have to pay for, so if we can avoid all of those by doing something, I mean, so it's not just, it costs us $40,000 for somebody a name, it's, the alternative to that is what? And yes, we could expel the kid, but we've thankfully chosen not to do that. We've chosen to try to work with the kid to help them.
And that's another statistic that's really important. For our contract services compared to our surrounding districts is unbelievably low, and we work very closely with the CPMT where we approve those contract services. Our number of kids compared to Montgomery DC and our surrounding jurisdictions is very low. So we should put that in the, the costs that we're not incurring as well.
It's one of the bullet points I had, because I think you have, it's that preventive piece of it for sure, but it's the part that we can truly measure, which is vis-à-vis contract services and, and what we, we need to do or have to do to meet...
Cost avoidance, right.
Of course, yes.
Well, and certainly for students who have disabilities, we're mandated to provide services to them. And so there are jurisdictions where when there's a disciplinary thing and you have a student with a disability, they put them into private school, which has not been the avenue we've chosen to follow.
The other thing is, there are some changes in this year's legislation around the use of CSA funds, and we are working closely with the county, so they're the Comprehensive Services Act funds. And they want to keep more people locally than going residential. Our area for that are the more severe autism. So we are talking with the county to see whether we should create some more comprehensive services here, because we know the trend of the kinds of kids that we can't meet their needs. And if you want to reduce that number, then there is some movement of using the Comprehensive Service Act money for that within a school system. The piece that we have to be very careful about there is that we don't say, this is what we're giving you, instead of paying for your contract cases. So it has to be a balance of both of those things.
And does the Medicaid discussion happening at the state level now, do you see that having an impact on us, positive impact on financial...
I think so. I hope, we just got some positive indication, actually, an email I got today. So we just got that news, and I'll be able to process the email more, because it does look like a trend that will be a positive flow towards us. Plus, I think I've mentioned that we just went last year with a company to maximize our revenue, our revenue through Medicaid. So that combination plus the changes, I believe that we will have a significant...
May be really specific. The change, I'm specifically referring to, in addition to just Medicaid in general, is the ACA, Medicaid, and, and that additional expansion of the, of the income levels as well as the services. I mean, will we see, will we see, if, if the state were to agree to do that, and I realize that's part of the contention right now, would we see some financial positive impact on us, or is it not like we would?
We would, according to my email today, but before I give you any numbers, I have to go back and look at that. Because I just got it today.
And I appreciate that, and I know that would be very helpful to our state legislators for them to see that, and not only for, obviously, Fairfax County, but, but others, but at least we can talk about Fairfax County, and they can ask those questions. And even for the governor to know that personally. I mean, I would love us to send him a letter, and Noe Young's walking the other way, but love to send him a letter talking about why this, this would matter for Fairfax County.
So what I'll do is, I'll research that, and then I'll get that back to Mr. Moon and Dr. Garza, saying if you wanted to comment, comment on this, this is where we would be.
Yep, and just the last point is, I love the flexibility of TSRC. I mean, it worked, it's, I've seen it work, I've seen it evolve frankly over the years, and I like how it's evolved. I think that's positive. I am very concerned, the Landmark model is, was a unique model, and one that I agree needed to be updated, if you will. And, and I, as in most of the things that we do, I know it, you can't have a single site and really do it well. So I believe deeply in the work-study, particularly for students who are less enamored with school and need, need a hook or need a connection to school. And it truly, anybody who's been to the Bryant graduations for the last many, many years has seen those kids over and over and over come in, kids who, who are very specific about, I got my high school diploma because of this program. I was frankly checked out, and they helped me check back in and worked with me. So I'm just kind of, everybody, there were six copies of this at Landmark put together that they asked, we distributed you all. I've been there recently, and their, the staff there is obviously devastated that their program is changing, and they had a group of former graduates that come, a significant number came, and I wasn't able to attend because I was out of town, but, and talked about the program and how meaningful it was to them, and how important it was for them to get where they are today. So I'm not here to say, you know, we have to do another Landmark directly at Landmark, because those days are done, but I am here to say that the concept is incredibly important. The model, I think, is incredibly important to meeting needs of kids who, who are less academically oriented, still need and still want some of that academics, but they need more of a work environment to, to...
And we couldn't agree more, and one of the things that we've been doing is interviewing the students who will not be graduating to make sure that their needs are met and showing them how that will happen. I, I agree with you, there is, that, that program had its really golden days, and that is changing, and change is really hard for those teachers. And, and that is hard, and it isn't any different that if, I've been using this analogy all the time, if we practiced, if you went in and you had your child being treated by a nurse who had done everything for the last 20 years the same way, it wouldn't be optional, because so many things have changed. We want to continuously improve our practice, and we want to meet the kids' needs, and we're interviewing to make sure we do that, but some things have to change. And that's very hard for teachers who love kids and who do passionately everything they can to have them be successful.
That's exactly what these folks are about.
Yep.
I would like to get, just if there's some additional presentation on what this is, I would look for an opportunity to visit or see or do whatever the broader reference. TRSC, you've changed the formula, I like that. You, I think, dovetailing CEI into that makes imminent sense to me, and I always wondered how that could work for a kid who barely was in school and just going to be on the computer somehow, once a week, show up, you know, and it worked out. So I would like to just know more, whenever you are ready to have us visit, I would like to visit a TRSC site that's...
We have some very fun sites to visit, so we'll set up a visit and invite you all.
Great, thank you.
We can do that. I have Ms. Hines, followed by Mr. McElveen and Ms. Evans.
Thank you so much. It's great. At this point, you know, I've been on the board a little over two years of my four-year term. It's really nice to have an update, so thank you. Just had a few questions. I see that we've got about 86 to 89% roughly minority attendance at the, in these places, and I know that the disproportionality was an issue that the discipline committee looked at and made some recommendations, so we're probably waiting for that to kind of work itself out. But noting that, what, 85% of these kids at the alternative high schools are self-referred? And we've got, you know, 85 to 90% roughly minority students. Do we have a sense of why that is, and is this something the skipped committee might be looking at?
Go ahead.
Particularly at the alternative high schools, the largest percentage of those are students who come into the United States at 17 years old, and they don't speak English. And maybe they have had somewhat limited or sporadic education in their own country. And so the alternative school setting gives them more flexibility to, they, they have permission to go to their base school, but they don't find it, they're not fitting into the typical high school environment, and they like the flexibility in terms of, they often have to work and family support and that kind of thing. So that's what's skewing that number at the alternative high school.
The other thing that skews it is that when a school team is working and a kid's said, I'm just leaving, I'm just leaving, sometimes they'll say, why don't you try this? And it's not just a student referral, but a family referral. So they're saying, I'll do anything if I can keep my student engaged, my child engaged. So it is coming from students that don't fit into the traditional high school. And like you said, school within a school is something that we really have to pay attention to.
Thank you. Also, you mentioned Piment briefly, and I just wanted to get back to that a little bit, because now we have a TSRC there, right? But at one time, it was one of the alternative high schools, and we closed it, and there was a sense in the community that that was a loss, and that we kept it open. We didn't, there was a sense that we didn't realize a lot of savings by keeping it open and not having the high school there. So if you could, just briefly, do we, do you feel like we need the alternative high school there, or...
Again, it's capturing the adult-day student that doesn't fit into our school-age population but can't come at night to Fairfax Adult High School. It does not have all of the programs and services that a full alternative high school, it's not staffed anywhere alike. So I could go back and tell you, there were immense cost savings by closing that one site. What we did find was the need to transition, and so we kept serving kids. But Mary Ann is also going through with the adult high school reorg to say, who belongs where? And you'll see a lot more of that this spring when they finish that, because change is hard. But we can't provide the same level of service to 18-year-old and 20-year-old and PE to 50-year-olds. And so we're really trying to give some concrete guidelines around the kinds of students that are best served in another population. So we do have the TSRC site and some adult students, but it's not a robust alternative high school. high school.
Okay. But you're looking at that whole, to see what the best suits is for.
The TSRC there also helps, like, Marshall students, who again, are looking to take a second class or, you know, make up credits or whatever, so that location works well from the TSRC.
And that was the other thing for keeping something there, is our other sites are so far away, so.
Right, which is, right, which is why I feel like, some people felt like, well, closing that alternative high school left some of those students in the lurch somewhat, because they have farther to go to get to the other sites.
So we do have a minimum level of service for that reason, but the students that need what they need are, so we still have the senior center there, we have preschool site there, because we're out of space in that entire region for preschool, so we have four preschool autism sites, classrooms there, and we have the ACE upstairs as well as the TSRC site.
Okay, thank you. One more question. The OSS sites in Vienna and Alexandria, are these the original SOS sites? I thought they both had closed.
No, they're not. They are at Quander and Cedar Lane, and we tried to put them there to avoid the cost of, two things, cost of serving so many kids in their home, and keeping them in a more full-day setting when students with IEPs were in the discipline process. It has not generated the numbers that we'd like, so we're still looking at that, but that is not the, those are not the SOS sites.
Mr. McElveen?
I would just add that Mr. Stork's proposal, we should all show forward to the legislators.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, I mainly just wanted to thank you for sorting through all of this for us, because, you know, I think when we see these programs, we don't have as great a grasp on it. So this has been very, very helpful in clarifying, and I agree with Mr. Stork, I would love to go and visit some of these sites. I can tell you, when I went and visited AIM and saw their graduation, that made me a real believer in that program, because that was the time when there were three students who had, it'd taken them a while, but they had gone from being seriously gang-involved to graduating from high school, all with very specific plans for what they were going to do. So go back to your, you know, that starfish got saved, so, you know, that was wonderful to see. And I'm delighted to hear that you're looking at the idea of expanding the non-traditional to another range of students, because I do think we see students who need the non-traditional setting, a smaller setting, and sometimes it seems like there's no perfect place for this particular child, so I'm glad to see that you're looking at that.
One thing to that point is, we took lessons learned, and Shannon's back there, she sits on the On Time Graduation Task Force, and we took the lessons learned in our alternative sites, and we've been working with Annandales and Stewart, and pushing in some of these strategies, Apex and those things, with that set of schools. So it's been very successful to say, what lessons did we learn? Don't put kids in a room with Apex. Match up and really build the relationships. And so, we don't have time tonight, but she has really, working on that task force, taken a lot of lessons learned into a couple of our at-risk populations, and she's a good source of creative problem-solving back there.
That's great. I think that's really exciting work, and I'll look forward to seeing, you know, what develops from that, so thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments, questions? Dr. Garza, did you want to say something?
Yes. First of all, I mentioned the other day that we're really giving a lot of thought to how we share best practices throughout the system. And so you'll see ahead where we're going to really overtly design some ways that the great things that are going on in pockets all throughout our system around different topics, that we'll have the opportunity to share. I mean, I think of Annandale and their SAM program, for an example. It's an unbelievable program, but I bet a lot of schools don't even know it, it's out there. And they've had it in place for 10 years and have real results to talk about. So we're working on that. And then I just wanted to take a moment to compliment these two folks and their entire team. They just do such great work. We're very, very, very pleased and appreciative for all that you do. I know that there's been a lot on your plate over the last few weeks, certainly, but on an ongoing basis, they're just a great team, so I'm very, very appreciative for your hard work on this presentation.
Thank you.
I would let you know that while you are working here, I went out and made two house calls, that's what I'm calling them, crises in schools today, and I was like, "All good, all good now."
Okay, do we have action items? I wrote down a few. Okay. Provide out-of-school support data, and Ms. McLaughlin had asked about that from page 26, because it said most students returned within 14 to 20 days.
Numbers of students for each day, number of days.
Right.
Right.
Elizabeth actually not related.
And then we're looking at a cost per pupil, and we're also looking at the contract service cost.
How to maximize the Medicaid revenues.
Yep, Medicaid revenue.
And scheduling a site visit for TSRC.
TSRC.
That's what I had.
I think Ms. Reed got that.
Yeah.
Can you read them again?
Yeah. Okay. Provide out-of-school support data regarding the mostly returned within the number of days that was in this report, just the next level down in terms of, what does it mean by most returned? The cost per pupil for voluntary selection to alternative high schools, the avoided costs.
You could just make that cost per pupil, you have to separate, in my mind, at least the voluntary and involuntary, just whatever, for that particular, that particular...
For people for the alternative.
For the alternative high schools, okay. The avoided costs of contract services, right?
The other one I don't think we had was, I need to do some investigation on the competitive base on that.
Yes.
Right.
Trying to get that to us, so we can get it to legislators.
The first one, provide out-of-school support data, that was, instead of we said the number of days kids are out, it was an average, and so we're going to have how many kids are out, 14 days, 15 days.
Just, much work.
I just meant, the statistic just says, most were out for this segment of days.
What does most mean?
It's just, what percentage, the percentage for each of those.
We have an easy chart that we can give you that says, zero to 10, 10 to 20, 20 to 30.
They're big on data.
But if I say provide out-of-school support data, that's enough?
Yep. And then the last one was a TSRC site visit.
Right. And we only have, at this point, one location where we could go where there's sort of the vocational part, because the next is being set up for next year, but...
I understand, even if it doesn't happen this, the rest of this year, just, I just, I know I want to be on to visit whenever you're ready to show the new model, if you will. That would be what I'd like to see.
Thank you, ladies.
But can I just ask one thing Elizabeth gave me does, and I don't know which one it is, provide the overall program cost for alternative programs and cost per student.
Well, we got that.
Yeah, we got that. We got that one.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah. Okay, all right, this work session is adjourned.
Okay, see you on Thursday.